We are going to go ahead and call this meeting to order at 5:06 PM. And can we please get roll call?
Commissioner Figueroa is absent. Commissioner Leal? President, Commissioner Gonzalez.
Here.
Vice Chair Navarrete.
I don't see him. Absent. And Chair Beahan.
Here. Thank you. And I apologize, I skipped over the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm looking at the agenda on my phone and it's a little small. So I'll go ahead and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could just place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic. One nation under God. Thank you, everyone. And we did roll call, so we're going to do approval of the agenda. At this time, the commission may announce any items being pulled from the agenda or continued to another date or request. The moving of an item on the agenda. Do we have anything from commissioners? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Can we get a second?
A second then.
Thank you. And can we please get roll call?
Commissioner Figueroa is absent. Commissioner Leal?
Hi.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Hi.
Vice Chair Navarrete? Absent and.
Madam Chair Beahan?
I. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to approval of the minutes. And we don't have anything because it's a special meeting. We're moving on to written communications. Do we have anything from staff?
There are no written communications.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to move on to public comments for non-agenda items. The public may address the commission on any item of interest to the public that is not on the agenda, but is within the subject matter jurisdiction thereof. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have any public comments at this time?
There are no public comments, Chair. Chair Beahan.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to move on to reports and requests. Do we have anything from the commission? And do we have anything from staff?
Nothing from staff.
Okay, so we're going to move on now to our item, which is our non-hearing item. It is a presentation regarding LAFCO and it is for municipal services review process. Whenever you're ready.
Okay, and Chair Beahan, so this is Gabriel Bas, Development Services Director. So the previous meeting. And I would, I can hear a little bit of background, so if someone might be good to hear the background noise. Until you're ready. A little bit. Okay, so at a previous meeting, the Plank Commission was interested in learning more about the LAFCO Municipal Services Review Process that the cities in Coachella Valley are undergoing with Riverside LAFCO, the local agency formation commission. And so this is the time that that happens. It's a periodic review that that occurs. And the cities are consulted about the services that they provide within the city. It's also an opportunity to make recommendations for the sphere of influence for the city. And the sphere of influence is that area that the city could potentially expand into in the future and and expand the boundaries of the city. So before I pass it on, I was just going to provide a little bit of background information, at least that I have. So I'm going to share my screen. So just for context, the city boundary. And what if the commissioners could put it on mute right now? Because I'm still hearing background noise. I don't know if anyone else can hear that. So this is the city boundary shown on on this map. But within this boundary is also this, you could barely see it here in maybe orange. There's a sphere of influence on the western side of the city. That's bounded by Calhoun. This portion, which is not a street, but just west of Van Buren Street. And this portion here, Avenue 50 to Jackson Street. And then this area from Avenue 54 down south to the airport, Airport Boulevard. And then also this area out here, just east of the A-6 Expressway. And to this boundary out here, which is a little bit more of kind of hilly mountainous terrain. For LAFCO's maps, what the? Yes.
Gabe, sorry. I, commissioners, if you guys can all mute yourselves right now. We are recording the meeting and we just want to make sure that any folks that want to watch the meeting after are able to understand what's being said. At this time, there is a lot of background noise, so I don't know if maybe someone is using two devices at a time. But if you could just go ahead and mute yourself, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Okay, so this is a sphere of influence map that LAFCO has for the city of Coachella. Again, it shows those areas that are sphere of influence in the city's boundaries. But the map also shows the sphere of influence of other cities. So La Quinta, which is this area here, shows their sphere of influence extending to Harrison Street and to certain portions at the edge of the city of Coachella. And then the city of Indio sort of influences kind of here where you would have the Fantasy Springs Casino. And then to the north of the city. And just closer look at those fair influences for the city of Indio. And then for this city of La Quinta. So one of the things that, you know, we're going to provide comments on is regarding our water and sewer service area. So this is sewer and water service area map that was that was prepared. And this was pursuant to a MOU with Coachella Valley Water District more than 10 years ago. And so that's for that service area map actually extends out to Jackson Street and airport and then all the way over here where we saw this sphere of influence identified on the map. So it's one of the things that, you know, we'll have in comments that because we do service those areas, you know, our recommendation is to expand the sphere of influence back to those areas. So in the MSR, there are two maps that I would kind of take a look at in recommendations regarding that sphere of influence. There are two areas that are identified in the recommendations. This area here, which is identified as P7, which is the area between or or close to Calhoun and then down to Jackson Street on the west. South Avenue 50 and north of 52. So this, some of this areas is area that's not a sphere, sphere of influence of any city. And then there's this other area that's called P14 that's in the recommendation in the MSR. And I'll go into that a little bit. So this is a closer look at that that area, that's that P7 area. So you could see this is Coachella's sphere of influence and this is Coachella's sphere of influence here. So this area, it's not in the city's sphere of influence, not in the city of Indio's sphere of influence. But it is in our water and sewer service area. So if you were to review the municipal services review, there are some recommendations about the sphere of influence. And so I would bring your attention to that area called P14. Where currently says it's in the Indio sphere of influence, but it, you know, it talks about that potential that it could be in the sphere of influence for the city. Because the city does provide water and sewer services to Eagle Falls Golf Course, which is on both sides of Coachella and also the city of Indio. The other is P7 that I mentioned, which is west of the city boundary. Called pocket seven. And so in the recommendation by the consultant to LAFCO, it doesn't say whether it should be in in city of Indio or the city of Coachella. But it does say that, you know, RSG is their consultants. So they recommended coordinating with city staff to understand the implications of designating that area, neither the city of Indio or the city of Coachella. So take a look at that. If you have the opportunity to read the MSR, obviously, the Plank Commissioners or the public has the opportunity to provide comments on the MSR. That comment deadline is April 27. But but that's, you know, that's the end of my portion here. And I did want to pass it on to our, the LAFCO representatives. And so we do have Crystal Craig. And I believe the other gentleman is, is it Gary Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, well, I want to thank you for for joining us and just wanted to open up the floor to you. And then I don't know if you have any visuals, but if you don't, that's perfectly okay. And also, there'd probably be opportunity for for commissioners, if you have any questions of the LAFCO representatives. This would be an opportunity. So this would be kind of more of a presentation and study session format.
We have something funny come up on our screen here. It might be on your end.
Oh, okay. I don't, something's funny coming up on your screen?
Yeah, looks like an advertisement to download some. There you go.
Yeah, it was the Zoom background. Sorry about that.
Okay. All right, well, this is Gary Thompson. I'm the Executive Officer of Riverside LAFCO and Crystal's here. She's the Assistant Executive Officer and she's also handling the the MSR project for all the cities, you know, as you may be aware that the actual consultant that we retained is reviewing all 28 cities in the county at one time, Coachella being one of them. And my understanding, you just kind of wanted a little overview of how the municipal service sphere of influence process works. Just as a little background. LAFCOs are basically mandated under state law. And our, our general legislative requirements are listed into the Cortezianox-Hertzberg Government Reorganization Act of 2000. And it's in the government code and it's very extensive. There's probably 100 and some odd pages of requirements in there. The LAFCOs are responsible to do concerning powers of LAFCOs, what we can and can't do. Discussions concerning reorganizations, city incorporated corporations, district formations, you know, special district formations, dissolutions and a number of things. And part of that also is the requirement for municipal service reviews, sphere of influence updates every five years that were required to do for not only the cities, but also all the special districts in the county. We've been embarking on that over the last few years now, trying to get caught up. There for a while, the LAFCO here got behind a little bit because of economic issues and the recession and other other points in time that kind of delayed a lot of the work, but we're working on that now. In any event, there's a couple of relevant sections of the government code that addresses our responsibilities for sphere of influence reviews and updates and municipal service reviews. One is basically government code section 56, 425, which talks to the the requirement to update spheres of influences every five years, actually how you establish the sphere, how you update a sphere, what you do to review a sphere and things like that. I'm not going to go into any details in that. However, a couple of items that do stick out is when the commission is actually looking at a sphere of influence update. If a city is looking maybe to expand their sphere or even if the commission is considering it. One of the things that the the law requires is that the city work with the county initially to make sure that they're in agreement as to the development of that area concerning what the city wants versus what the county would be pursuing as far as development within the sphere until it's annexed into the city. Normally, when we have sphere of influence changes, it's as a result of an annexation that's coming in at the same time for say a specific development project. And that's all been worked out ahead of time anyway. But in this process itself, where you're potentially looking at expanding a sphere just based on the municipal service review and the five-year requirement, then those items kick in. And and the commission is responsive to make sure that if they do look at expanding a sphere, that that certain criteria is met. What is also required when updating a sphere of influence in this five-year review process is it has to be, whether it's part of this process or whether it's an actual sphere change based on an annexation process. You have to do what's called a municipal service review as part of that. And and it was described pretty well what that is. Basically, a review of the the city overall, services provided, some financial aspects of the city's outstanding, things like that. Looking at future ability to provide services within the city as well as potentially in the existing sphere and potentially an expanded sphere. And so that's all incorporated into the report pretty much. The process unfolds kind of like this. When 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 we decide to go ahead and move forward with a sphere of influence in an MSR process under the five-year requirement, we'll either do it in-house or hire a consultant depending on the workload and everything else. This particular one, back in 2019, we retained RSG, the consulting firm, to do this particular project for all 28 cities. Do basically workload requirements because we're doing some others for special districts separately. We hope to have this project finished a year ago, but because of COVID, everything got delayed. And, you know, in mostly in deference to the agencies, show so short-staffed and everything else because of COVID that we didn't really want to burden too hard on on having to submit information for data requests and things like that. But generally, the process is that the the consultant will initially send out questionnaires to the each city. Each city got a questionnaire. They'll also go look at the city's website to see what's information up there that would be relevant to the to the to the MSR report and sphere of influence decisions, recommendations. They'll go into like the state controllers' office information for some financial data and other items, things like that. They'll usually look at on the financial side, you know, recent audits that are performed as well as city budgets. Services side, a lot of that is handled, you know, as part of the questionnaire process where we're asking the city to kind of describe your services, what you're doing, how you think you're doing. You have any issues anywhere, you have areas that you have trouble servicing, you know, for whatever reason, things like that. And that's all rolled up into the report as we go along. Generally, when the information comes into the consultant, whether it's a consultant or even our own staff, you know, we may do some follow-ups directly with the city to get some clarifications on certain things, you know, that are in there that need clarification. And once we get to the point where they've got all the information they need to start putting the report together, that before it goes out for any further review, it'll come into our office here and we'll do what's called an administrative draft review just to make sure that the format is everything is correct and it looks like there's areas that maybe we want them to touch on a little more strongly than that we see before it goes out. Once that's done, then then it goes out to the cities for review. And this is, you know, what we're calling here now, the public review draft, even though it isn't, hasn't gone public yet. But the agencies were all provided this particular draft so you can go through and start looking at this before we release it publicly and provided comments that are germane to that. We do put it up on our website. So we do also expect to receive public comments. And it's out there and we haven't got any, have we, directly from the public?
Just a few.
Just a few. So it's, you know, for 28 cities, the the public response has been almost nil, which is interesting. But we have been receiving comments from various cities on different things. As you had indicated, you're going to be submitting some comments on your related those sphere of influence areas and whatnot, the islands, which is fine. That's what we're looking for. Any comments you have. So once all the comments come back in. And we have this cutoff date of this coming Wednesday, that the the package went out for review about a month ago. A little over a month, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And the only reason we have a quote cutoff date is it doesn't mean we quit accepting comments. But what we need to do is get what comments, we have to have a date so we can get any comments that that do need to go into the report itself for a change. And we screen those first and let the consultant know, well, you really do need to make this change or no, this is just a comment, we can address it later as part of our report to the commission. But because we need to get that report then redrafted with those comments and anything else that that we see in there to come out so that we have it ready to go out for the public hearing report, which would be the report that would actually be put before the commission at the public hearing. And that right now is scheduled for our June 23 meeting. So we're, we're, we want to get these comments in, you know, this week, which is our cutoff date. However, you know, as part of the process, we do accept comments all the way up through and including the public hearing. Just through normal routine, like all agencies do for, you know, city projects, you would do the same thing, I would assume. And so they all become part of the record. And they all end up in a package to the commission so that the commission has everything that's been received, all the comments. Any, you know, the the public review draft will show everything in there, you know, up to that point that is part of the the package. And and then we'll be giving a staff report and, you know, be assessing, you know, certain, certain portions of it, which we think needs some some further review or maybe not, or, you know, possibly some recommendations, but we're not there yet because we have finished up the comment period, at least for this this part of the process. So that's kind of the quick overview. And that's, that's where we're at, you know, this process, because of COVID, has taken longer than we thought. But and some of the data is a little outdated. It's addressed in the in the report. You, some of it is being revised now to reflect that. But we decided that trying to re, re go back through and revise all data to bring it up completely up to date would have been monumental task for the consultant and would have cost more money. And, you know, it's just a snapshot in time. The other thing that we did do as part of this review too is because the census was completed and we got new income data. We were able to reassess all the disadvantaged unincorporated communities in in the county. And, you know, most of those are obviously associated with cities, spheres of influence. And we were able to roll all the, what we call ducks into the into the process. So so we were able to get that done too. That was part of the delay also was getting that finished before we would move forward. But the timing was good to do that, so we did. But other than that, unless you have any comments, that's how the process works. That's where we're at. You know, comments are due Wednesday and then what was the date we were looking at trying to publish the public review? Just, or I'm sorry, the public hearing?
It'd be two weeks before it goes to the commission in June, but the consultant has a deadline for for them, for them, for their team. So that's why it's imperative to go ahead and we allotted that one month comment review period for the public in all the cities. So we would publish the staff report one week prior it going to the commission with all the revised comments that we would be receiving. So we want ample time to review all these comments that we've been receiving, which we have been getting quite a number of comments from cities. And I read them, sent them off to the consultant. It's a 900-page document. So that, like I said, the report based on all the comments that we see, obviously, we can't make a recommendation because those comments are still coming in. But we would have that report available to the public one week prior to when it goes to the commission. So we're looking at mid-June.
Yeah, we'll be sending out a public hearing notice on our regular schedule, the very first part of June or late May, whatever schedule it's late May. And then, as Crystal had indicated, you know, we'll have that draft out, the public hearing draft out as soon as we can and usually a couple of weeks before the actual commission meeting. And the staff report would come out when the agenda gets posted. We had, we published the agenda literally a week before the commission meeting, the agenda with the staff report and everything else. We published it on Thursday evening, the week before the Thursday morning commission meeting each month. So there's a week in there when the staff report comes out too, that the public and the agencies can also look at the staff report and even provide comments at the public hearing if need be. So that's, that's how that works.
And there was already an internal draft where the cities just received their respective section. So this is
Right.
the second shot that the cities have.
Yeah, I forgot about that. There was, there was an internal draft that went to the cities first before even the public review all encompassing report went out as well. So, yeah, there's been a couple bites at the apple so far. And again, this is another shot. And other than that, if there's any questions?
Yes, I have a question. Yes, this is the alternate commissioner. I have voice in the commission but not a vote. My question, first of all, thank you. For me, you made a good overview of presentation. Is there also the timeline involved in this process? And my question is, who is the consultant?
The consultant is a firm called RSG Incorporated. They're based in Santa Ana. They've, they've done municipal service reviews in different areas in the state. They do a lot of financial consulting for special districts, infrastructure, financing districts, things like that. So they've got a pretty broad background of of work in in the local government field. As a matter of fact, the principal there who's in charge of this protracted product, project himself, I've known since 1995. So he's, he's, he's a, he's been around a lot and they're, they're a pretty good firm, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name's Commissioner Gonzalez. Just wanted to ask, so so you, has there been any interaction? You said the report came out a month ago. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any interaction with our city in reference to input recommendations?
Yes, I can answer that. We've had two Zoom meetings with city staff.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's very important. This is my position. You know, we, we need to be engaged and we, obviously, we have a lot of comments. And and so, so, yeah, I'm looking forward to 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 the draft and looking for that submit put, you know. We have a lot of questions and hopefully we can get the right answers.
Well, any questions you have, make sure you get them into us so that we can get them addressed.
So so the final, you said there's a, the final meeting or the is in June, is that correct?
That's, that's the public hearing where this will be presented to the commission. And then it's up to them at that point in time how they handle it. They can either accept it as is, as far as the MSR, they continue it to the next meeting in July if they have questions that they want answered. They may or may not make any recommendations on sphere of influences. You know, it'll strictly be up to the commission at that point in time. You know, how they want to address, you know, everything that's in there. You know, obviously, we'll have a staff report providing some guidance on what staff thinks. And other than that, it'll be up to the commission to decide. They don't necessarily have to approve everything at that meeting, but they can. So either way.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So you did mention earlier that the reports are every five years. My understanding is it's every 10 years. Is that correct? Or which is it, five years or 10 years in terms of what?
It's five years or as needed. And and, you know, but but. And and you know, but but as needed doesn't necessarily mean it should be ten or twelve years. Um like I said, the LAFCO got behind a bit on some of them because uh of circumstances that were mostly driven by budget issues during the previous recession and whatnot, but but um the cities, the cities, you know, the bottom line is we're trying to get back on track so that we can at least prioritize some of these and do them every five years. Um but you know, the goal would be to get somewhere between five and seven years apart. But certainly ten is is too too long.
Yeah, perfect. Yeah, it's been difficult years of this COVID stuff, all that and not being in person, being really engaged with. Okay, yeah, thank you so much. Very informative and uh we look forward to working with you guys and uh hopefully you can have some input in on the what the outcome is and on your guys' weekend. Thank you so much.
Oh, uh Gary and Crystal have a a comment. Uh this is Gabriel Perez. Um is is the the meeting that happens with LAFCO, where where does LAFCO meet? Maybe uh my understanding it's on the Catala Valley, it's in Riverside, correct?
It's it's at the county administrative office in uh downtown Riverside, although we do um also um teleconference. Uh people that want to comment um can do so electronically by telephone um into the system and provide comments if they don't want to come to the meeting, they come to the meeting because the the building's open. Um but you can also uh conference call in and then during the public comment portion of the of the hearing, then we take public comment. Yeah, so it's pretty much running similar to what it was called in every other city everybody's doing right now with the with the the accommodating, the the zooming in. Some of our commissioners zoom in, some come to the meeting.
But it'll just be like your agenda where the link will be provided, any passwords or anything like that.
Yeah, whatever whatever you need to access and and because we do it through the county, there is a special little caveat how they we process requests to speak. And you know, there's a form that uh you would fill out ahead of time, you know, you you would go and ask, say you want you want to speak and then they'd send you the link to fill out the form and it works pretty well, actually. We don't have a lot of public speakers, but uh it it uh it works pretty well. I know the board of supervisors use it, and that seems to work real well too now. Because we use the same system there at the county building, so.
And also it'll be noticed um to the paper of their own three newspapers, all press enterprise, the Desert Sun and whatnot, so that'll be one month before it goes to hearing in June, so public will know.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you. And any um any drafts or any materials that they have sent to the city, Gabe, I don't know if it would be okay to or possible to get some of that sent over to the commission as well. Um anything that they've sent over, um just so that we could also take a look at it. I know we're still going to wait for public comment to happen on the twenty seventh, but um anything else that could be shared with us, that would be really helpful.
Okay, yeah, I did send over uh a transmittal from from LAFCO about with the documents and there's a link in there. Uh so I'll I'll resend it to the commission.
Okay.
Uh but there's there's several documents um that are part of that um re review. I think there's, I don't know, there was quite a few.
Um. Oh, I think.
Gabe, uh if it's not, you know, too big, can we get some hard copies printed? Uh you know, Ventura here would like a commissioner and would like a copy of myself, so yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we could do that. And yeah, just let me know if that's a request, so it's busy. Um I guess Commissioner Gonzalez um and and uh the others I can provide to you, so. Um and then if, so they're digital format, but if if uh there's anyone else that wants it in hard copy, just let me know.
Oh, I just want to add that when um the cities got their respective draft, their section, now what's on the website, like all the cities are seeing each other's recommendations and whatnot. So like I, like Gary said, like this is the kind of second poke where you'll be able to weigh in on your, you know, your neighbors um or adjacent cities within the area. But um like I said, that internal draft um went out just to the cities, but what you're seeing on the website is the whole package.
Okay, good, good to know. I think that's something really important for us to point out uh to our community members if they are watching or if they get to see the recording. Um a lot of the information is is public, so you can actually go on to the website, um just like with the board of supervisors or like the planning commission. The agendas are are public and you're able to see the attachments on there, so hopefully, you know, everybody gets the opportunity to take a look at that information.
Yeah, I mean, as you indicated, it's also live streamed the day of the meeting, um and I believe it's still televised as well on a couple of the uh cable channels, the the uh now.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Anything else, anybody?
No.
Presentation.
Yeah.
I think that was it.
Just I want to thank them for their presentation, very informative, so look, really look forward to to working with them.
All right.
Thank you for taking the time to uh meet with us and um, you know, present the information. We look forward to receiving any updated documents and then also uh knowing that we have public access, so we can, you know, view the meeting, uh take a look at all that public information. So it's available to everyone, um but we really appreciate you guys taking the time to meet with us today.
All right, no problem, anytime.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, um.
We're gonna go ahead and leave the meeting.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for um accepting the invitation on short notice too. Thank you.
Oh, no problem.
Okay, so we're gonna move on. We don't have anything for a public hearing. Um do we have any informational items from staff?
Uh no informational items from staff.
Okay. Okay, I guess we're gonna adjourn the meeting at five forty three P M.
I'm sorry, uh Chairman, okay, can I make a recommendation? I think it's very important because of the shorter time and that we uh maybe set up another special meeting or uh if we can add it to, it's probably going to be too late on the on the next meeting. But uh I think we should continue the conversation and see how uh we can interact the community and engage the community. I know that uh I'm talking about twenty years ago, I remember vividly that I was working with uh one of our interim city managers that would actually serve uh the interim city manager. He was actually a chief building inspector for uh the city of Palm Desert, but he lived on on Jackson between Avenue fifty two and fifty. And uh he was very involved in talking to people in that general area for them to come into the city and actually be part of the city of Coachella, so. Uh you know, we just need to uh whatever we need to do to uh to advocate for some of those boundaries that that personally myself, I think that belonged to the city of Coachella and that we lost, you know, and they went back to India. So uh to me, it doesn't make sense. And really, I think the reason they did that because uh we didn't really advocate for those uh boundaries, but we need to advocate for the boundaries because that in essence is the future of our city in terms of tax base and the future development that's going to occur in some of those areas, surrounding areas. So I think it's important. So I'm going to make the recommendation that we set up another meeting. I I don't know what uh Gabe thinks or when 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 would be appropriate, but uh I'm just gonna put it out there, so I'll let you guys decide on what what the timeline would be.
Okay, yeah, and then a- as far as the timeline, uh I I assume their meeting was maybe in May, but considering that's June twenty third and that comments could be received even all the way up to the meeting. I mean, there's 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 still some time to to be able to um engage the public and then um they want us to make comments, there's an opportunity to do that. So there, you know, there is a public process for this and uh the representative that we had been meeting with, they mentioned that uh some, a lot of times that public input really matters and that influences the decision because it's a it's a board, right? And so they're also responding to comments from the community.
Another comment uh question, Gabe, is a pump, is the city comments, are are those going to be in by Wednesday?
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, we want to get those in by the by the deadline, so we're we're sure that they're being evaluated uh before they're making their their report.
And then can we get a copy also of what the India's position is, La Quinta's position on what they're recommending to LAFCO uh in terms of where their sphere of influence would be, sphere of influence.
You could see that i- if you look at the documents, it doesn't really say, like, it didn't say what the city of Coachella recommended when we had those discussions with them. It's all um what I saw was that the it's what the consultant uh had recommendations for when they were doing the review.
He just said that uh those those recommendations are available and and the comments that
They're available online. They, so they have them on their, so you can, you have public access to them, so they're online and you can we would have to individually, I think, like go through them because we know what we're looking for. Um like we would be able to see what, you know, like the city of La Quinta, city of India, I think that's what he was referencing too, is that that is all available.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful to look at.
And I and I can send those specific recommendations. And so again, a lot of those recommendations are going to really stay, at least it said on ours uh were the consultant's recommendations. So but I'll send you what their recommendations were for the other two cities as well.
Perfect, thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, thanks. That's all my questions. Thank you so much.
One more question. I mean, Gabe, hey, do you know, all this information is available on the city's website? I think a lot of people goes into the city to see where the calendars or what's uh where the dates, important dates, do you think they can put any information with these on the website or?
Yeah, 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 we could. Yeah, we could probably do that. Probably the best way I'm thinking about is maybe on like uh social media platforms, right? So a lot of times you see the agendas on there, so that seems like the way that people get easy access and then we could probably find, I haven't done it on the website, so I can look into how we we would do that. Um I I know the twenty seventh is right around the corner, so we'll see if we can do that. Um but I'm really thinking like, you know, making sure the public is aware of the the June meeting, right? Knowing that they have opportunity to comment or call in.
Yeah, you'll be a lot, you'll have a lot of calls.
Yeah, we share that on social media, even like on the city's Facebook, like sharing that meeting. And you know, the importance of it, like what the conversation is going to be about. I think a lot of people would choose to join or I mean they're able to, they would choose to join, so that'd be very helpful to add on there. Does anyone have any other comments or questions? Okay, okay, so we are going to adjourn the meeting at five forty nine P M.
Thank you, everybody.
Staff for everything.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Bye, thanks.